Good evening. I'd like to call the July 16, 2015 meeting of the City of Sebastian Plains zoning commission to order, please. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
Mr. Dodd?
Here.
Mr. Kieselbach?
Yeah.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Here.
Mr. Dur?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
And Mr. Reyes?
Here.
Okay, just please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and this Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice.
Okay, there are no announcements or agenda modifications that I know of. Does anyone know of anything that needs to be said in that arena? No? Minutes, approval of the minutes now for the regular meeting on June 4, 2015. Does anyone have any modifications or changes they'd like to make to those minutes?
Chairman, we did, I did change, it was a very minor change to the minutes. It was done this afternoon. The copy that you have to be signed off does have it, but it is under the approval of minutes section on the second paragraph where Mr. Roth was talking about understaffed matters to possibly discuss about changing or revising the agenda. And instead of saying would like to consider to adjust to their applicants, it was requested that we change it to say, "Consider to adjust for the public's interest." It was just a minor change to the minutes on that part, on that paragraph.
I'll move they be approved as amended.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second. Does anyone, does everybody understand the modifications that Doris was talking about? Okay. The approval of the motion is signified by aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the motion signify at the same time. No one? Passes. Okay, we have a single quasi judicial public hearing. Would city attorney like to introduce that, please?
Yes, sir. This is a conditional use permit sought by Adams Homes for a new model home at 526 South Easy Street.
Thanks, Mrs., this is a quasi, yeah, it's a quasi judicial public hearing. Is there any ex parte communication from any of the commissioners on this item?
Yes, I have conducted business with, I have conducted business with Adams Homes in the past.
Okay.
Mr.? Let me ask you a question. Are you, do your business involve anything with regard to the application that's presently before the planning and zoning commission?
No.
Would you be able, despite your business dealings with Adams Homes in the past, be able to make a decision based on the evidence that's presented tonight?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, first, anyone who's going to present factual information to the commission on this item this evening, would they please stand and let the city attorney issue the oath?
Please raise your right hands. You solemnly swear the evidence you'll be presenting to the planning and zoning commission tonight will be the truth to help you, God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the applicant must make a presentation.
My name is Peter Gunn. I'm general manager for Adams Homes. I'm just going to give the application, I guess, present the application.
Yeah, that's the paperwork we already have, I believe, is it not?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so, yeah. Basically, really comments that you'd like to make about the, we actually, we've all received a copy of the application and the information, so if there's any comments you'd like to make related to it?
As much as we can do it, it's great.
Okay. Okay, then let's let the city staff present.
Okay, this is for a model home for Adams Homes, 526 South Easy Street. And we haven't had one of these for a while. This is a conditional use permit, application, and the required findings is that we go through in reviewing these is listed on page two of your staff report. The first required findings are pretty generic. The conditional use criteria is more specific. In going through those items, there are a number of things that we need to tweak a little bit on this application. We'd like the applicant to state for the record, since there's no indication of their intent on their application itself, we'd like them to state for the record that there's no construction materials or equipment will be stored at the model. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, there won't be.
The model sign does require a separate building permit, sign permit, and it shall not be, the application, we do have an application in-house. It has not been approved yet. We're working with the applicant. It was a little too big, had some other issues. It did note on there that it was going to be illuminated, and that's, that was in there. They have, they have been flying some flags. The American flag is always fine, but we do not permit, you have to keep in mind, this is a residential district, and we don't want it to look like it's a commercial district. So, we don't allow, even in our commercial districts, we don't allow open feather flags and all that kind of stuff. So, all of those flags that we've seen in the past, all those have to be removed. I believe they already have been removed. And then there's been some off-premise signs directing people into the model. It's kind of a fine line, but we recognize a model home goes through a process that we're here tonight doing, but open house, the open house signs are a different animal. Those are houses that are actually for sale, that you, there's a realtor or somebody sitting in that model, even the owner sometimes, and they're trying to sell that house to the people. They're not, and a model home is, you know, an example of the product that Adams Homes is selling. So, we don't do open house, we don't combine the two of them. So, they can't do the off-premise open house sign, even though there's somebody in the model, because they're not actually selling that house. So, we need to have the off-premise signs removed, and they have been. The parking on the plan that you have in your packet, we did note that the, there's a requirement that that, the parking in the, out there that they're showing in a right-of-way, the parking, they have to come up with five parking spaces. We always give them two, credit for two in the driveway, and then they need to come up with three more. And the code does allow them to use the road right-of-way, which they are, but it does have a requirement that they're supposed to stay 10 feet away from that side, the extension of that side property line out to the road. So, this afternoon, a gentleman from Adams Homes dropped off a revised plan where they have moved it. They've moved it over to get it further away from that, from the neighbor, the side property line. So, we're good with that, as revised. So, we came up with recommendation at the end of the staff report. We've got a list of conditions we're recommending approval, subject to, no construction materials or equipment will be stored at the model, that they obtain their sign permit for the model, the illegal signs must be removed, off-premise signs must be removed, they need to apply for a right-of-way permit. Normally, we don't ask them to do that because we generally get the detailed information for that parking in a right-of-way on the application. And in this case, we didn't get the details. So, I checked with our public works department. It's a no-fee permit, but we want them to submit the design for the stabilization of that parking area, and our public works department will simply, there's a form, it's a one-page form, it's no big deal, and there's no fee, but our public works department will be signing that off, so that's a condition. We asked that they post, and this was something that the planning and zoning commission come up with a number of years ago. There was a comment that, you know, while it's being used as a mobile home, or as a model home, excuse me, it is being, it's like a small business that's going on there. And there was, some of the commissioners thought that it seemed appropriate to have some sort of accommodation for handicap parking space. So, in past model home permits, we've designated, we've asked them to designate one of the parking spaces that is in the paved driveway as a handicap parking space, but we don't want to go full-scale here and ask them to do painting on the driveway or striping and all that. Want to keep it, we still want this to look like a residence, so we have, the commission came up with this, that kind of keep it low-key, but at least post a sign. Post a sign, usually it's on the building itself, or it could be on a post, but somewhere up there show that that's where you intend for your handicap person to be parking. So, put that in as a condition, and the final condition is that the contractor would remove the parking area and the model's home signage when the model permit expires.
Commissioners, at this point, will ask questions for the staff and the applicant. That doesn't look like a swale in front of that property when you drive through there. Is that actually a swale? On both sides of Easy Street, in that area, there, the reason they don't look like swales is there isn't really any dip in them. There's no drainage that goes through there. They're all kind of level with the roadway.
Um.
If they stabilize that, are they going to block water flow at all?
Well, that's why they have to work with public works on this. I can't speak on this one, but I have seen someone older in past years on Barber Street where somebody, you, you had a bad one.
Yeah, you have to storm the gravel there, make a little dip there, so the water can flow there.
Yeah.
Right. And they have to, it's tricky, because sometimes you end up with a little lake out there.
That requires continuous maintenance after the rain, because go for the dip that you keep.
Make sure we go down a little further, make sure everything drains properly.
The thing I'm wondering is if there, is there, will the public works department talk about the possibility of running a drainpipe under that once they stabilize? Because if they, if they don't stabilize that well enough, it's going to be a disaster as people park in there.
Right.
And so, you know, are we looking for something like that?
Well, they will, in, when they get their permit, they will have to negotiate something out with public works to make sure, and then they're going to have to maintain it. And if it, if it becomes a mess, or, you know, either a drainage problem, or just unsightly or whatever, we're going to have to have them fix it.
Okay. Enforcement is always the harder part of these things, you know? It's always up front, better up front to have it done right than to try to enforce it later.
Right, but I think it's in their best interest to take care of it, because they want it to look good. They're going to want their, their model to look real good, and, but sometimes, I have seen ones that, when we get a hard rain, they didn't have a parking area anymore until it went away.
There's already, I think, a handicap sign on that park, on that garage wall now for that handicap space.
Oh, that's good.
Already put that up, but that, your employee, I'm assuming you're going to have one person there most during the day that's probably going to be dealing with clients in there.
Yes, sir.
Is your employee going to use the driveway to park, or are you going to have that employee use the outside parking spaces so the driveway's open? Have you thought about that?
Haven't really.
The thing that, the thing that concerns me is if-
She's been in the driveway.
Yeah. If you, you have a handicap space, a driveway, and employee parking a driveway, now all the customers are going to park on the street, and, or they're going to park in a handicap parking space. Once again, why designate a handicap parking space if the first customer that drives in is going to park in it, because no police officers are going down the street and writing tickets on that handicap parking space? It's hard to get them to do that in Walmart, let alone-
Yeah, I'm not sure that, you know, without the striping on, on the pavement, I'm not even sure that they would write a ticket.
Yeah, they would probably, so.
But I think it was just the best effort of the planning and zoning commission to come up with something to try to accommodate handicap on these.
Is it within the signage for them to put customer parking signs on these three spots, three spots on the street? Is that an issue from a signage point of view, for them to mark those as customer parking?
Um, we've never had anybody do that. I don't know if, I don't know if that's a good idea.
What if they put, put parking stops that can be removed and then paint customer parking on those stops or something like that?
Possibly, that may be an idea.
I think we'd like to see as minimal signs as we can, so even if it is directional or parking signs, but they usually don't have wheel stops in there.
Some of them do, and I've seen them where they've actually had to have a bit of a retaining wall, because they've had to cut into the bank.
Well, that's, the way that that lot is sloped, it doesn't appear to me that they're going to be able to stabilize parking spaces well enough without making them higher than the yard, possibly. I just couldn't, the only thing is, if I lived in that, in one of those houses around there, the one thing that would bother me is those three parking spaces out there, and the way that they would look from a neighborhood point of view and so forth.
And I know that the applicant, they had suggested that they get credit for four parking spaces in their driveway. The problem with that is, is, you know, the parking spaces, front to back, you know, what are you going to block somebody in? I can kind of see if the one up front is, closest is the employee, but then you don't really want your customers walking a mile, so it's a, it's a tough situation there.
Mr. Carter, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one. This may be more directed at the staff. This model home permit's typically four years, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And it can be renewed. Is there any limit to the number of times that it can be renewed?
No limit.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right, Mr. Dur.
I have no questions, thank you.
Mr. Kasemak.
Yes, I think this 10-feet space from the neighbor property, that is must. And I don't know how they will maintain three parking spaces after giving 10-feet space, so I have to see the drawings, so. You have, on south property line, you have at least 10 feet, and you have 24 feet driveway.
Put that, can you put it on the overhead, please?
Let's see if you can see that.
Well, you guys will be able to see it.
Do they have to do that in the back?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously, we would rather not have to put those parking spaces in the front, but I understand what you're saying about parking, but, you know, we thought two up there would count as two, and those would be two more, and then maybe one parking space would be a little easier than three.
Yes, I would prefer to have at least 10-feet space and two parking spaces, I think. That'd be easy for them to handle it. So, we have to give them a little bit, okay, for four parking spaces to five, because they cannot make it five with the 10-feet space to the neighbor.
That, what he has on the overhead is slightly different than the plan in your packet. That's the new one that they brought off, and they were going to pull them closer to the driveway.
Well, when you add up all those, all those numbers there, and 10 feet to the neighbor, three parking spaces, 30 feet, that's 40, then you have 44 feet there for the driveway, then 10 feet on the other side, that gives 74 feet. So, you have only six feet left for your calvert. So, not much there.
It was dropped off this afternoon. I, you know, didn't have a chance to put-
I would like to give them two parking in the front, and they'll say, but that's up to you, so, that's up to the commission, so.
It'll be your call.
Is this, you're calling this a design center, of course, it's a model home, but I mean, is this for all of the Adams properties in this general vicinity, or is this-
Sebastian Highlands, yes, sir.
Okay. What's the, what's your anticipated volume of customers that are going to be rolling through here?
Well, we don't think, we haven't had that many there at one time. It's, there's, we have one person that works there, and it's hard for her to talk to five different people at one time, so kind of people will drive around or set appointments at a certain time. But we'll do whatever you want us to do, it just, it's not going to look as good. Obviously, we'll try not to make it a drainage issue.
I'm just, just wondering if the state, from a stabilization point of view, could they better stabilize two parking spaces there if we gave them credit for three in the driveway, if the front parking space was the designated employee parking?
I can't speak on that. I'd have to ask the public works department, city engineer. I cannot speak on that.
I would agree with Mr. Dur here, that I think two parking spaces adequate, based on you seeing and I've seen experience. I mean, you do have traffic, but not for all that. I mean, I don't think it's necessary. I know, I'm just-
Here's my opinion on, I think people will park wherever they can put their car that's closest to the door. And so, the reality is, I think that they will stack them in the driveway.
Yeah.
I would, if I was pulling in there.
Mostly, they all, every time, they just pull in, yes.
Yeah, but will, would the code allow us to do that, and are we setting a precedent here by saying, well, you only have to have four spaces?
Well, instead of saying we only have to have four, what if we designate the driveway as three spaces with the space closest to the house being designated as employee parking?
Well, that's the part that I'm thinking is precedent-setting here, is to doing parking spaces front to back instead of side to side. And that's your call.
Okay.
I can only think of one time, really, and it was on a full-blown commercial project that we did that for, and it really came back to haunt us, and so, it didn't work.
Yeah.
But-
One of the problems of having these model facilities in the residential neighborhoods is that you impact the residential neighborhood. If you want to keep that to a minimum, then you really have a problem trying to enforce commercial codes on that.
Right, exactly. And then we've got, in recent times, so many of the models have had two lots, and then they just put their parking on the second lot and, you know, just develop that way. This parking in the right-of-way, it's the, I think it's the only approved time when you can actually put some parking in the road right-of-way legally, temporarily.
I tried to find something, I tried to find something in the code that said it was okay to do that. If it's designated a swale, you can't park in it. The code says that, so how, I don't know how we could even allow them to park there.
It's actually in, in the model home section of the code, where it says that's-
I couldn't find it.
You're allowed to do that. That's one of the approved places that you could put your parking, but I think it's the only use, it's allowed to use it.
Can I ask a question? I'm, I'm sitting way down here in another time zone. I think I missed the original thought of why the three spots on the street are a problem. There's three spots on the-
Well, the issue that was brought up over here was that there's not enough, not enough footage, there's not actually enough of a property line footage to be 10-foot off the property line and then have three spaces before you get to the driveway.
The drawing shows there is, though.
Well, yeah, the drawing.
The drawing says one thing, but if you look at the screen, it's a little closer.
Yeah.
You see the two reds? A little bit closer than if the one here.
Closer. How many feet is it actually between the two parking areas? Since this just came in this afternoon, maybe, Mr. Gunn, you can share that with us, do you know?
There's 54 feet of parking space on an 80-foot lot. If he kicks it over on the west, 10 feet, he's still going to have plenty of space, but he's going to fall on top of that mitered end section.
Yeah.
And you're going to have an issue with drainage, where his suggestion to put in a pipe there and remove it when you're done with your sales center would work. You do have the space, except for you're going to block a mitered end section there.
Which, in order not to block it, obviously, we'd have to dig the dirt out to there to-
You would have to de-sign your parking adequately there. I'm concerned on how the visitors are going to get to the sales center from those parking spaces, you know, what are, how are we going to maintain pedestrian traffic there? They're going to come out into the road to get, and to come out to walk into the driveway, which is, most people would do anyways, but it's a concern for me with the public there. But as far as shift, it'd be better if he can eliminate one of those three and just have two out there, so it's not such a, I don't, I don't think it's going to, usually if somebody's going to show up there anyways, the sales agent's got to be the first one there. He's going to be parked already in her designated spot that you have SA here, and that's my comment there.
Okay. Ms. McManus?
Yes, I assume these are going to be asphalted?
No, sir, they're not supposed to. I think it was supposed to be permeable, like some type of rock.
Yeah. Some manner stabilized, and that's, we don't have the detail on what they were going to propose, and then our public works department has to approve that, but no, we don't want them to be, unless they were doing it up on a separate lot and it was going to be completely off the road, we would not want them to pave that.
Okay. If you, if you made those just a little bit deeper with whatever you're using, couldn't you build a slight swale right into the space itself?
Well, I'm sure that that's what we would have to do.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't block drainage.
No, but if you did that, I went by there, and the lots are pretty even there, and if you even had a three- or four-inch slight dip as you came in, but in order to get it where the car wouldn't go bang-bang, you'd have to bring these back more than 20 feet, it seemed to me. But it's, that's just a thought, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, do you have anything else?
I have another question. Do you have any other model homes in the area here, right now?
Not right now. We had one in Ashbury, but we're just about sold out of there. That's why we built this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McCann? No? Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Roth?
Just one question of the staff, that, there was a point made that items, well, two parts of the supplemental were not completed. Were you satisfied with the information you got that took care of that information? I believe it was-
That no construction material-
Six and seven on the supplemental information, there wasn't filled out, and I just, if you're happy with it, that's fine with me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
He stated for the record, it just, it wasn't noted in the application, and we just wanted him to go on record.
Okay, good, thanks. No, that's it. I, I don't see what the solution is on the three parking spots on the street. If our code says they're necessary, my thinking would be that we would need to follow it and not set a precedent. As staff has pointed out, it may require a pipe underneath there somehow connecting the original drain that's there underneath on a temporary basis to prevent some type of ponding in a heavy rain.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
All right, I'm going to, we'll have to deal with that in a couple minutes after we get to that point, but following the rules of the quasi judicial, I'm going to now open this up to the floor for anyone who is here to speak in favor of this request. You've already done that, so you don't have to do it again. Seeing no one from the audience coming forward, I will open this up to the floor from anyone from the public who is in, like to speak in opposition to this request. Seeing no one from the floor. Since we haven't, didn't have any public input, I'm assuming that the applicant and the staff don't have any remarks to discuss public input in that, in that regard. As far as the staff summary, I think you've done a good job of doing that, unless you'd like to restate, restate it again.
I'm good.
Okay. Plains zoning commissioners, deliberation and final, and final questions. It appears to me that we had one item that flowed through the questions that was pertaining to the parking spaces. Does anyone up here have any thoughts beyond the fact that there was some discomfort with the ability for them to put those three paces, spaces at the street level?
My thought is that the public works will work with them, and they're going to have to present a plan to them to review.
Okay.
Yes. That's -- we have that listed as a condition.
Okay. Now, the right-of-way permit process, does it include check-offs for things like storm drainage and stuff like that?
Yes. It is the Public Works form, and they have to -- they're -- actually, this work will be in the road right-of-way, so it's on city property. And that's why I specifically told them that they have to have a design detail. They have to give us more than that's where it's going to be.
Does that satisfy your concerns at all?
Yes, sir.
It does? Okay. All right. Okay. Given the fact that that's the only item that really came up during the commission questioning, and I think that the indication is that Public Works -- Ms. Ginsburg?
Mr. Gunn?
Yes, sir.
What is your position with the Adams Homes?
General Manager.
Okay. And are you familiar with the history of Adams Homes with regard to signage and issues with signage relating to the city in the past?
Not in this area. This wasn't my area. I was basically ran for St. Lucie.
The city staff went through some of the requirements and the prohibited types of signs and so forth, and flags, and banners, and so on. You're familiar with those requirements?
Well, my sales manager has been handling all that. That's -- they've been here and been working this area, so I have not been involved in it now.
Okay. I want assurance from Adams Homes that you will agree to abide by the city's sign code with regard to off-site signs, open signs, banners. All those things are disallowed. Can you give us that assurance?
I will do my best. I can't stop everybody from doing everything, but I can try.
All right.
We try to -- we don't want to create issues with anybody.
All right. Can Adams Homes, and I get through you, because you're the only person here from Adams Homes, will you give the Planning and Zoning Department assurance that you will use your best efforts to comply at all times with the city's sign code?
Yes, sir.
And you're the contact person. Since you're a general manager, you could be the contact person if there's an issue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Could I have one question on that? Like, let's say, like a normal realtor does an open house. We actually do open houses and houses that are finished also. So, can we, like, direct people there like a normal realtor can?
Is that home for sale?
No, no, no. I'm talking about a, like a spec home.
Other home. Yeah. If they have spec homes, that's a whole entirely different thing. Those are real estate signs, and by all means, you can do an open house sign. There's regulations. You know, they aren't there 24/7. You put it out whenever you're ready.
Okay.
When you're there, you take it in. When you're leaving, locking up.
Right.
And that's all real estate, under the real estate section of our sign code. But this is a model, so we don't want to see those type of signs directing people to your model.
Okay.
Because it just doesn't work that way with a totally different section of the code.
Question. Can they put a sign in the window? Open sign? At the door or window?
Technically, no. Our sign code is very restrictive on signs in the residential district, and it specifies signs such as a nameplate or a decorative address sign. Those are the type of signs that you normally would see in a residential district. Open flags, open signs, you know. I wouldn't want to go by there, you know, two weeks from now when everything's up and running and see a snipe sign in the yard that says "Open," because those are prohibited. That's--
At the door, at the window, they have a timing. What time is open, what time is--
You know, if you have a little subtle, nobody's going to go crazy over something. Like, you've got in the window that says, "I'll be back at 3 o'clock." You know, a little clock or something like that. We're not that crazy, but it's the big, much more offensive to the -- you know, if you're the residents that live in next door or across the street, and they had a reasonable expectation that there was going to be a residence across the street from them, and now, all of a sudden, it's a business. And, you know, we send letters out for these conditional use, and we had no response this time, but sometimes we get them. And people will be here and saying, "I don't want it," or whatever. But if they follow the rules, which are pretty strict, I think they can coexist.
You indicated earlier that the monument sign that was currently there is too large.
Yes.
I remember the signs on the models that used to be on Barber Street that are now gone, but those signs were relatively small. They were almost like temporary signs.
Six square feet is the copy area that is allowed on a model sign. Now, they'll look bigger than that, because we have a code that says they're supposed to be on a monument base, so they'll be real decorative with their base, and maybe they'll put real big columns on the side. And all of these are just decorative features to make it look really nice, maybe tie it into the look of the house. But the actual sign, six square feet. So, that's pretty limiting. I mean, it's not as offensive as, you know, we -- you know, we're walking a fine line here. You need to be able to see it, and we'd like it to be decorative and look really good. So, we give them some of those decorative features, but the copy area is very specific in the sign code, six square feet. So, the latest revision that I got, they're working on it. We're almost there. We don't have the detail on the monument base, but it'll be within the guidelines.
I guess my question is, if we approve this with the recommendations, condition number two is that they obtain a permit.
Yes.
There's nothing in there that says that they remove the existing too-large sign.
Well, they will. And I say that because they will be removed by code enforcement or by voluntary.
I'm sure they're down. I'm not 100% sure, but I know that they've been told to take them down.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that if we needed to specifically say that, we did hear, as opposed to just saying they get a permit.
Yeah.
No. You're okay, because what we're talking about is what they're going to be permitted to do. Anything else? Anything that's not included will not be permitted.
Will be gone.
Okay.
Now, the other feature was no illumination.
Right.
Right. Because your application talked about an illuminated sign, and that's not -- okay.
Yeah. And we never intended that. I just, I don't know how that got in there.
I think they just checked the wrong box or something.
Oh, okay.
I think.
We don't have any of our signs that are illuminated.
There's no illumination on what you had out there now. I mean, there was no sign of any kind of illumination on what you'd actually--
Yeah. None of our model homes that we have have that.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else that like to say? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Someone have one? Okay, then I'll make one. I move that we approve the model home conditional use permit for Adams Homes for the property located at 526 Southeast Street with the seven conditions as stated in the staff's recommendation.
I'll suck that motion.
That's going to be the two parking or the three parking?
No, it's going to be as submitted.
As submitted, three parking.
Yeah. And the recommendation that they get the right-of-way permit, as we discussed, should be the item that takes away the issue about the parking, because the city staff will deal with that. Okay? No -- any comments about the motion? Yeah, let's have a roll call, please, Laura.
Mr. Dur?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Kizelbach?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, and I would open the meeting up for public input, except there's no one here to do that. So, I'll move on to new business. There is none. Staff matters. Does the staff anything like to report?
No. I can't think of anything.
Okay. Commissioner matters. I'll start that. Are we doing anything on the landscape code?
We have not -- we have very minimally started it, and really, we've just not had the time, and it's just been a time issue, sitting on my table. We've scheduled one or two meetings with Dory and I. We're going to sit down and start it, and--
Okay.
It just hasn't -- but we haven't forgotten about it, I promise.
All right. This is just a question. Driving down Main Street after they redid Main Street, that -- I mean Fleming Street now that goes into Main Street, that sidewalk is a royal mess. Are they intending to redo the sidewalk as part of that project?
I do not know, but we'll look into that and--
I don't know whether -- I mean, it surprised me that they--
The sidewalk along Fleming?
Sidewalk on the Fleming piece of it. I mean, it's a -- it -- not only is it -- the mess from the piles of stuff there, that appears to be construction debris that they'll end up removing, but the sidewalk itself looks almost like the grinder got it or got part of it when they were grinding the street to repave it. I don't know. I mean, it looks--
Bad?
Yeah. Well, it looks like it's not really a sidewalk. It looks almost in a lot of places like it's just the berm of the road now.
Uh-huh.
And I was just wondering, because I still -- a lot of people tend to walk down that -- walk up and down that sidewalk, I think. I see a lot of people on it, so I was just wondering if maybe just kind of a question ahead.
Yeah. We'll check with Frank.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments they'd like to bring up?
My understanding is the sidewalk is usually the responsibility of the homeowner in front of his property.
Well, I don't know. If the city destroys a sidewalk or redoing a street, then that's kind of the egg and chicken argument.
Unless it goes after the homeowner.
Yeah. So, the next big thing is that after -- we got past the walls and the canals. Now, we know that the city's going to do those. I guess we'll have to get an argument about whether the city does sidewalks or not. Uh-oh. Anybody else have anything?
Yep. Talking about sidewalks, there was an underground drain repaired in front of Park Place, just to the -- would be the east of the Park Place entrance. Everything's been done. The road is nice, no dip or bump or anything, but there was one sidewalk square that was cut out, and it's been about three, maybe pushing four weeks, and it's not been done. Projects small like that tend to fall off the radar. I have, and I don't mean to take a lot of time, there's three things that I wanted to bring up and kind of gathered them all together. I would like the city engineer to consider working with the police department, the traffic area, to look at heavy vehicular traffic, semi-trucks, dump trucks on Barber Street. There really isn't any need for them to be on Barber Street from US 1 going east -- I'm sorry, going west. All the way through from Pelican Island to where Schuman is, and then wrapping all the way around to 512. There is heavy truck traffic there, and I'm just questioning the need for it, and if we, as a city, should be concerned about truck traffic there. In that same order, close to home, it was brought up to my attention. Barber Street's two-way, only two lanes, one each way, and frequently, I'll be going home, coming from US 1 to turn left into Park Place, and I keep close watch on my rear-view mirror. I'm suggesting the city engineer look into a passing blister on Barber Street right in front of Park Place. And a couple of times, I almost got rear-ended, and once that I sped up after a complete stop to avoid being hit. So, I just something -- again, these are possible long-range things, but just things to be considered. And I don't know who the city engineer would talk about that, probably with the police department and others to make sure that it's feasible. And the last one's kind of big. I know it's been around for a long time, but -- and I've talked to Dory and Jan, and they've both given me some input. I looked at it, and I think the Barber Street, again, where it intersects with Pelican Island, going from US 1 west, there's a stop sign. And Barber Street does indeed turn left there, but Pelican Island turns right. And the county did acquire quite a bit of land. I think there's a couple lots that aren't purchased yet, and all I'm doing at this point is kind of bringing this back up to the surface. Our previous city manager mentioned it once and was going to look into it, but he got some kind of a better job somewhere and left, and this project kind of fell aside. So, I'm bringing that back up again as a possibility for, you know, possibly to look at doing something with. I know it's a touchy area, because I looked, and I think Jan pointed out to me that there's, you know, one maybe owned by the school, so there's a possible scrub jake concern there. And whenever that name comes up, there's issues. But those are the things that I wanted to bring up to just get back on the radar screen again.
All right. Got it?
That's it.
Okay. Items for the next agenda. Does anyone have anything like to request specifically put on the next agenda? Seeing none. Okay. Then I believe we are adjourned.